When the wipers are going and in fog conditions, we want to make sure that we have our low light levels or in fog lights, if you have them, to make sure your vehicle can be seen. It's a few near misses, simply because people didn't have their lights on. So we're at this time of the year that fog can be present. Make sure that you have the proper lights on. Okay, with that, we will move on. Next, we'll have presentation and discussion of the fourth quarter and fiscal fifteen sixteen year-to-date energy usage. Mr. Pennington?
Thank you, Commissioner Ardray. In the board packet was our fourth quarter memo, which was the fourth quarter and the fiscal year-to-date amounts for our energy as we report every quarter. When you get to the fourth quarter, it's pretty easy to skip over the fourth quarter and go straight to the year-to-date to see how you did for the year. We put together the, the numbers and for the fourth quarter energy report, and again, this is energy usage, not necessarily energy dollars. But our kilowatts were about one and a half percent below what we had the year before. I'd consider that almost a break even. Terms were up only about three percent and the water was up seven point eight percent. Now, the interesting part is that these all don't bill at the same rate and they all are not costing the same unit cost. For the year, we were about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars under our budget that we had for utilities. Now, it's almost impossible to put your finger on why that was because there are pluses and minuses. Number one, we had a lot more building usage, so that would have taken, that would have added to certain items. We also have had energy savings that are going into it, so that would take it the other way. And we've also had, you know, weather changes from the prior year as well. But to end up with less than what you budgeted for shows for a favorable year. We will probably budget, well, we will budget sixteen seventeen at the same amount we had the year before, not the actual, because we don't necessarily base it on the farmer's, farmer's almanac or anything like that, but we know it was a relatively mild year. A lot of our usage increases were simply because the buildings are being used more and more each day, each week, each summer, each month. So we may be using them and probably are using them at a more efficient rate than the prior year, but when you look at the totals, there's more cost to it. Now, Dave Leader has added some of the explanations for some of the larger changes from fourteen fifteen for the fourth quarter on one page and the year-to-date for the other page, and you can see for the most part, we can find reasons for why certain fluctuations happen during the year for the quarter, and there are always interesting items. For instance, Craig, staff members allowing fieldhouse doors as well as courtyard doors to be held wide open while in cooling mode or failed equipment. That's a lot of it. We also have one large item. It was for the quarter, I believe, Adams, we had an increase of three hundred and eighteen terms, which was, let me, no, I take that back, three hundred and eighteen percent, which we are looking into as a potential billing error or measurement error or the compar, the comparison from the prior quarter may have been for a different period or for a different amount. So we're looking into that. So this process of looking at everything on the quarter, and these are only the big ones that I've asked Dave to write down on these sheets because there's reasons for everything. You know, since we started this maybe six or seven years ago, we find things hopefully that have only occurred for possibly a quarter before we notice them and attack them, and then you find it at one school and that may lead the idea, well, if it's happening here and it's made a big impact negatively, we'll check some of the other schools that have similar types of mechanism and maybe nip some of those items in the bud as well. So it's been a good, you know, financially, it was a favorable year for utilities and we always are under the, the process of looking to keep everything as efficient as possible. We can't reduce our utility costs, obviously, we have to use them, but we want to make them efficient. And that carries into next year's capital budget as well, where a large amount, the million six that we're doing for Act thirty-two are all energy efficient items right there that, you know, you may not see a hundred percent impact in year one, but these are positive things that are improving the energy usage within the district.
Thank you, Jim. Couple of things, hearing a possible billing error, I make sure that the rate that each building is on is the rate it should be on. I'll just say it, we have found that some customers, we went to weaving a line energy, went to a new billing system and in a few isolated cases, the rate was changed, which-
Inadvertently?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was just in conversion to the new system, it was changed. So let's just make sure that it is what it should be. And, and some of it wasn't because of a change in rate by accident. The other thing is when I hear increased building usage, then that gets me into, so in reality, if everything had, it had maybe the same weather as the previous year, the bills would have went up. And we did have some energy savings, but probably not enough that would have overcome the additional building usage. So then it becomes much more important for us to focus on behavior and how do we actually use things efficiently? So as I say that, and one of the ones that I know as we talk building envelope and double doors, it makes no difference what building you go in. There, I shouldn't say it doesn't make a difference because one of the buildings actually closed their doors, but generally speaking, outside of Jackson, I'll give them credit because they did close doors, that you still see sections where the doors are propped open. It may be less convenient, but the doors are there for a reason. So even here at the ESC, as you walk out the back exit, the door is propped open unless I walk by and kick the door stop off of it. So if anybody asks, who keeps doing this? It's Greg, so.
Which, which door were you touching?
As you go out the back door here to the-
A Y.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're always propped open.
Oh, you mean the one that's like halfway down the hall? Or at the end of the hall?
All the, all the way at the end.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Yep, there's a double doors, outside door and one, and that's always propped open. So it's just, I mean, those types of things is we don't necessarily see how much heat loss, cooling loss we lose, but we lose some every time the door is open. And we get used to seeing those things, and yes, it can be inconvenient to have that, but when it's a safety situation and it needs to be propped open, yes, prop it open, but then close it after that, so. So it becomes much more of a focus to, to look at those types of things. So then we can help control some of the costs since we do even want our buildings to be used more. Related to this, but not directly from an energy usage standpoint, and I say this, Jim, because you may want to join, Commissioner Hoof and I have talked about doing walkthroughs of the buildings, similar to what I did by myself. So you are definitely more than welcome, we don't have a schedule yet, but once we do that, then more than welcome to join us. For those. So we didn't have any agenda in doing that, just walked through and really, so what I looked at last time was the usage of the rooms individually and then eyeballing the things that stood out, like double doors being open. Temperature variations, heat's gone and the windows are open. I mean, some of those things, so we'll be doing that starting October.
Actually, I think I remember when you started the building committee or whatever you want to call it, because you used to have meetings in different schools, because I remember Donna and I went to the one at Lincoln and we almost couldn't fit inside where there's air conditioning, it was in the summertime, but we did walk through, remember? We walked through the basement and that kind of thing. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we kind of lost that with having things televised, but we can still do our walkthroughs without that, so. Okay, anything else? Thank you. Next item? Okay, it is the next item. Presentation of the fiscal two twenty sixteen seventeen year-to-date, August twenty sixteen, financial summaries. Won't even worry about consider moving to the board because we don't have a quorum of this committee to move anything to the board. So we'll present and then act on them at the board.
All right. Basically, just wanted to highlight to the finance committee. You know, number one, of course, we don't have any budget numbers in the budget column because we don't put those in until after the budget's been approved. So it always looks a little strange the first two or three months. Highlights have been listed, generally speaking, there are no surprises so far. There may be some timing differences from the year before with regards to some items that had to be recorded in July instead of June, which gave us a head start on some of our expenses, but there's been nothing that's been overly surprising. One thing I will point out in looking forward to next month, the, on the graphs that show the cash freeze, cash balance and the fund balance, and I'll just, these are the ones I'm talking about, the, the colored graphs. We will probably have a September balance that was higher than the prior year balance because we are receiving, we actually received it yesterday, I believe. Instead of waiting till November and receiving forty percent of our aid, they changed it this year, so we receive fifteen percent in September and twenty-five percent in November. So in effect, you'll see a difference in our cash flow we received, I believe it was nine million dollars yesterday, two months earlier than we would have the prior year. So that's always a good change to see. It doesn't really change our spending patterns, but it gives us more money to work with, could improve our interest because we're holding that two extra months that we would not have had it before. So that will be something to look forward to next month, but again, nothing, no, no surprises so far. Everything is going as expected. I can't say it's going as budgeted because there is no budget, but once we put the budget in there, it probably will be going as budgeted. So we're, we're looking at things and our financial statements are in good shape.
Keith, do you think the state's getting the idea that we want to get our funding earlier? Do you think maybe they'll start doing more of that?
I hope so. It's a good start. Last year, they withheld a million dollars that was due to us in March and we didn't get that until July. And this, this is a good, you know, statewide, that's a lot of money that they're sending out a couple of months earlier, so I, it's a very good start.
Yeah, that, the, the hold of the money in March, there were quite a few districts that had to do some short-term borrowing because of that, few additional districts because some do it as routine. The items that had to be recorded in July as opposed to June, I'm assuming that there was, there won't be any issues or hardships with that.
No, it'll just come out of the sixteen seventeen budget.
Okay. Next is updated proposal and consider possible approval of the twenty sixteen seventeen capital improvement plan.
Another memo that was included in your packet, we had, I think, four or five items this time. As you recall, we previously proposed a capital improvement budget to the board of about one point eight seven three million. We had an early amount approved of one point zero zero five million to start some of the summer projects. Since that time, we have gotten into our Act thirty-two work and the board approved a million six to be shifted to Act thirty-two for the energy exemption. What we did then was look to see how much of the Act thirty-two money was in our original proposal, which was a million five, a million five of the million six was actually in the sixteen seventeen proposal, which left us, which left us eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. But in looking at our original proposal, which was about two hundred and seventy thousand higher than we had the prior year, it was staff's decision to, instead of filling it dollar for dollar, to stay at that higher level was to ask just for an additional seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to get our capital improvement plan amount to the same amount that we had the prior year. The purpose of Act thirty-two is not to move money from your capital improvement plan to Act thirty-two and completely drop your budget. So I don't think we're violating the spirit of that by asking for the same amount that we had the year before. So we're comfortable with that. We've identified seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of projects, primarily safety related or environmental related. We have the playground blacktop, we have issues with that district-wide, the fire alarm systems, our underground storage tanks, which constantly seem to fail or break down and we have inspections and have to replace them immediately. If we get those out from underground, that's obviously more environmentally safe. We have some road improvements and then we have a chance to add some parking spots at Adams for the staff there. So our proposal to the board would be to, instead of having eight hundred and six, asking for eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand to close off that budget, will be to ask for seven thirty-five to keep it at the budget that we had the year before.
Yeah, I, I read this. I agree with you wholeheartedly. I remembered Edison, years ago, we used to have to check, are you talking about the fuel oil tanks?
Yes.
Because at one time they fixed the tanks, but they didn't take them out. And as you know, over time, so we would actually take them out and they would just be above ground? Okay.
Which they are at the other schools.
Yeah.
There's, there's four, I believe.
Marshals is still underground too, I think, yeah. Yeah. Would these, the, the one question I had in my mind is, would this stuff be done before winter or next spring or both? Do you know?
It would depend on how soon things got approved and how long it would take. I would guess not, if you're talking the four, are you talking everything on here?
Well, I guess, yeah.
Everything on here would be blended in with our other schedule and we would try to get those as soon as possible. The outdoor items could probably take place as soon as possible, weather permitting. The indoor items, the fire systems, which really that's the only indoor item that we're adding to it. That would probably be done immediately or as soon as we could get those companies at those locations.
I was just thinking, because with spring or fall coming and then winter, I wouldn't know if you would want to be trying to move the tanks, you know?
Yeah, well, we'll let the people we hired decide that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Jim, you asked my question because I was, no, I was curious, how much of this would we be able to do before winter? So we'll just fit it in with the rest of our items.
And somewhat related to the capital improvement plan, at the next board meeting next week, we will be presenting a resolution, which is step two of the Act thirty-two items with the actual contract with our contractor, which that is a required resolution that needs to be approved. So we, we are going along in good fashion with our timeline for that as well.
Contractor being planned contractor or project?
It's basically UNESCO.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it is UNESCO.
So they will serve as sort of a, I'd say the general for-
In, in a way, not really quite that seriously, but they will assist us and they will be the ones that will be preparing some of the key paperwork to go to the state. And of course, they're the ones that are aware of the discounts and the rebates and the benefits and, you know, they'll be upgrading our capital improvement booklets that they've prepared. That information will be up to date. They will help us when we talk to the people that do the work. They will help also throwing in their, their two cents about this is what needs to happen and this is the type of item that should be used, it's the most energy efficient. And make sure the people that put in the, the equipment or the work or whatever, follow the guidelines to get us the results that we want with their recommendation.
Think one of the items, at least as we move forward with this, from a focus on energy to dollars that were available. I don't know if they are still available in a similar fashion, just not the personnel that comes along with them to make sure that we are still being able to embrace those.
Well, one of the specialists at UNESCO was our former focus on energy representative, so she's got a stranglehold on those concepts.
Yep. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, next item, presentation, discussion and consider approval of the fiscal twenty sixteen seventeen budgets for Fund thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-six and seventy-three. May need to explain what all those are.
Okay. We do this obviously every year. We have four, I don't want to call them miscellaneous funds, Fund thirty-eight and Fund thirty-nine relate to our long-term debt and I'll talk more about this, but just generally speaking, Fund forty-six is the money we've put away for future capital improvement items. Fund seventy-two is a private benefit in and out scholarship type fund and Fund seventy-three is regarding our OPEB as well. So just to go over each one in thirty seconds, not line by line. Fund thirty-eight is our long-term debt, this related to only one debt issue and that was the WRS refinancing that we went through, whatever it was, four or five years ago. The budget is strictly, what do we owe, what will we get from the tax levy? The only part that's a little different or unique than what you might expect, and this is just simply the estate accounting rules, the revenue is based on the current year tax levy. So that would be how much money we would receive from property taxes from July one to June thirtieth of our fiscal year. However, the expenses are always based on what your outflow is going to be on the fiscal year. So it's never ten dollars in, ten dollars out. It's always, it doesn't match a little bit and that's just the way it always goes and that's why there'll be a change in the fund balance. But for the thirty-eight, there's been no change in the payment schedule than what was originally issued. Again, looking at this, we had it at least back to two thousand and eleven. That might have been when it started. That's about five years ago already. And there's no, nothing, nothing different. The amount that'll be on the tax levy is about two thousand dollars lower than what it was the year before. And you could see that on the tax levy line item, which is on the top line of the revenues. That's Fund thirty-eight. Fund thirty-nine consists of the remainder of our debts, our long-term debts, our referendum debts, but also includes the advanced refunding that we had on the two large pieces that just closed on September sixteenth. So when we were talking about doing the advanced refunding, we noted that the tax levy should be reduced by about four hundred thousand dollars. And if you look at the top of page eighty-seven, the revenue, you can see it was going eighty-three oh six, went down to eighty-one oh, eighty-one thirty, and now it's down to seventy-six ninety-eight. Before we made the advanced refunding, that number would have been eight million ninety-four. So our refunding has lowered that amount of the tax levy by just about, again, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, virtually four hundred thousand dollars. So the principal and interest changed a little bit as well, but then again, that's for the calendar year, not the fiscal year. So you can see the impact already on the sixteen seventeen budget for Fund thirty-nine of our advanced refunding, so that's positive. Fund forty-six, you can see we have not forecasted any deposits into Fund forty-six for this year. The last two years, we've put in twenty thousand and seven hundred and fifty thousand and both of those were primarily the result of, did we have, the first year we did the twenty thousand just to put the, the stake in the sand to get the five-year time year, the five-year time clock rolling. Last year, we were able to put three-quarters of a million dollars into the fund as we had excess funds at the end of the year. This year, we're not budgeting anything, but obviously if situations arise where there is money available, the board can always put it in as the year, as the year goes. But since there's nothing certain, we're just going to leave it as a, a zero amount for the budget this year. Seventy-two, basically just manages scholarships that we have in the school, outside scholarships. We have a Bidwell Scholarship, which has been here since I've been here. The Capex Scholarship, I believe, is a music scholarship, which just started since I've been here. There's some Tago Scholarships that went in and out this year, that's not really, that's really going to blend itself to zero and the Acceleron Scholarships, which I believe are science-related. They're just marked and held in seventy-two, when distributions are made from those scholarships, they come out of this amount. If someone were to add a new scholarship, the Ardray Scholarship or whatever, that would show up here and we would work our way down as we go. So this is just a separate, unique fund for those separate, unique type of transactions. And then on the last page, you can see Fund seventy-three, which is our OPEB trust. And since we made the changes to OPEB, you can see that our, our balances and our contributions are going to start to go down, which were predicted after the grandfathering, not so much these first three or four years of the new plan, but after the people that were grandfathered, worked their way into retirement, this will go down quite a bit. These numbers are simply pulled right off of our actuarial valuation report. There's not much strategy or outside calculations that go into this. We go with the valuations, we know, we know the one four four eight four two seven will probably be exact to the penny. So again, we're not, we wouldn't expect any variations in this. This is pretty much a matter-of-fact representation of numbers that we will budget directly and pay as we go. So those are the five, those are five of the other funds, if you want to call them that. Ten and twenty-six are our two big ones, fifty you've already approved. So these are what I would call the rest before we have the operational and we would be bringing this to the board for approval on Tuesday night. Yep, that's, I'll bring that up for, yes, yes.
Any questions? My one question's about the one we can't talk about. So for seventy-three, when you said we will see, I guess, it going down, is the expenditure? I mean, we'll see, let me ask the question right here. When you said as the grandfather people start to be removed from this picture, what exactly would we see go down? What exactly would we see go down?
Well, you see, you're already seeing the district contribution dropping from three million to one million to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
And then the disbursements, you would assume would go down, that's based on valuations from the actuaries. It's possible it could go up, it's, it's like an insurance valuation where they, where they do the study knowing, you know. Over history, X number of people this year of age will be retired for this many years and so on.
So that's the actuarial?
Yes.
Okay, alright, that, okay, how do we know that, okay. Okay. Sure.
Keith, you, when the grandfathering is done, is that the next five years, you said?
I think it was five, I think they went back five years from the year we made the change.
Okay, okay, okay.
Which I believe was two years ago. It's confusing when we started this year and still have a last year.
And then it'll just slowly start to go down, right?
Right.
Right, okay, okay, thank you.
As, as it is planned today.
Yes.
Okay, our next item, update on fiscal sixteen seventeen operating budget preparation process.
There really are no changes to the budget right now. I brought the, a couple of the sheets from the prior meeting, but just to remind, the way we, excuse me. The way we have, we still have revenue increases potentially at two point one million, expense increases of one point nine million. So we have a net surplus right now of about two hundred and fourteen. This will change as time goes on and we find out more numbers, especially the. Actual, the final aid and our revenue caps, but that's the way it is from the way we've proposed it. One change that could occur Tuesday night is we had this extra schedule where we had capital improvements and I T. Where if we were given the budgeted amounts that we had originally asked for, we would have had to add two hundred and seventy thousand. To the additional expense, twenty one thousand, well, our request for the million six in capital improvements would just take this off the list. So the potential to add additional money to the capital improvements above what we spent last year, that would go away. So one of our, it's not really a contingency, but it was an incompleted item, not fully approved, that would go away. Everything else remains the same right now. We just received our departmental budgets on the sixteenth, which was last Friday. And we're in the process, it always takes a while to put everything together, conglomerate it. And see where we're at with that new piece of information, which, you know, are tens of millions of dollars.
Okay, now we'll keep rolling here, update on advanced refunding.
As we saw on page, around the funds for thirty eight and thirty nine, we have already budgeted for the advanced refunding. As of last Friday, the sixteenth, it has officially closed. Everything that was supposed to happen, happened, it happened the way we wanted it to happen. But actually, the actual results were more favorable than what we had put in our resolution on purpose. We wanted to be conservative with that resolution because we were asking for parameters, not specific amounts. And as I noted before, and we noted this some other place too, that the expected savings over the life of the new term. Was going to be four point two million, it's really now closer to four point nine million. My original estimates or original conservative amount was to reduce the annual debt by about. The payment and the tax levy by about three hundred and forty thousand. As you could see this year, for the next ten years, next twelve years, it will be reduced anywhere from about three hundred and ninety three to three hundred and ninety. Nine thousand per year, so about four point nine million dollars, which is good for everyone.
Definitely kudos to you and your team and everyone who worked on that, it's a great savings. And the next item, review, overview of the busing attendance system. So one of the things, Jim, during our last board meeting. It was mentioned, the card scanning for the bus attendants. And I'm going, I could have slept this, but I did not remember talking about this. So I just wanted to say an overview of what is the system, just out of more curiosity, how's it being used? So as I see that, then that will. There are some aspects that are beneficial, and I just give Mr. Pennington an opportunity to, to share that.
We are able to receive some funding from the state to cover our transportation costs. Only if we're able to provide accurate attendance information to the state, excuse me. I'm gonna get over this cold one of these days. And we've had some issues with getting accurate attendance measures, we had bus drivers make pencil checks on a clipboard. And that was or was not accurate, we've had some audits and had some difficulties with it. So we decided to look into something a little more modern than just a pencil and a clipboard. Bill Samborsky, the manager of transportation, did some research on some bus attendance. Mechanisms last year, we looked at two or three and one seemed like it would be favorable for us. It's basically issuing a card, similar to our I D badges, you know, similar to a credit card. To each child, each child has his own special barcode. There are two machines, one on each side of the door, when you walk into a bus. That when you walk in, you scan the card, and you don't necessarily have to put it against the machine. But you walk in one at a time and put it up there, and it will automatically record the attendance of Jimmy Smith that day. Now, we tested it last year at Jackson School. And with, we figured it had a little more challenging student body and. There was, there's, it's a little more tricky of a bus route too, primarily with some of the areas we have in the south. And we did that for about a month and found out that it worked very well. We know there's gonna be some kids that are gonna lose their cards, but during that month, very low percentage did that. We are able to take that documentation, it gets sent to a, it gets sent to the cloud first, then to a server. And we can do an attendance marker every single day, have reports printed that are accurate. One other thing it does is it is our best and most immediate source. In case we need to know from either direction, where is a child? Did Jim Millard get on the bus this afternoon, cause nobody remembered seeing him? Or on the other hand, the bus has a flat tire, it's stuck in the country, which kids are on that bus? And we'll know immediately rather than, well, we know how many, we know that forty kids can ride that bus. We don't know where, if, how many of the forty are on it, this will be able to identify in that measure too. So we primarily did it as a means to easily achieve the amounts that we get. Now, we only get a small amount back from the state, maybe twenty five, thirty thousand dollars. The system we installed in every single bus that, that drives, cost about twenty thousand dollars. But we figured it was a one year payback, and then we can get the twenty five thousand dollars, or whatever it might be at that time every year. We're pretty successful with it, we're pretty happy with it so far, these first few weeks, it's taken some time. I don't think we really had it going the first two weeks on purpose, just to make sure everybody had a card. We are not going to come into any violation of our attendance rules by missing out those first two weeks. Because it's really sporadic, we only need it measured a few times a month, or a few times a quarter, I should say. But this will give us, you know, not only overkill on that. But I think there's also other safety and other considerations that this will help us with as well.
Thank you, Jim, any questions?
Anytime you can add safety to the students, you know, we're all for that, and that's just a great idea. Like you said, and it's so simple, you don't really have to go up to the card reader, you just kinda scan the card as you get on the bus. So it's not really gonna stop the flow of the students getting on the bus, if there's a number of them.
Yeah.
But it's a great idea.
Only start four kids trying to cram in at the same time, which they don't want anyway.
But it's a great idea, as you said, as a safety measure, what happens on the way home? The bus gets stuck in the snow or something, you know, exactly the amount of kids that, you know, you can get a hold of the parents, it's just a wonderful idea, great idea, thank you.
So for the installation of this, was it Van Gelder did that or?
Yes.
Okay, so as, I know at some point we'll be having a conversation for new buses and seat belts and all that related to that. Would it be an additional charge going forward for that as well as the seat?
Yeah, we, we paid for it, they installed it, so they didn't charge us for the installation.
Okay, so if it was, if they were retiring a bus, we would just pull that out and put it in a new bus?
Yes.
Pretty much, okay, alright, thank you, appreciate that. Does it have any other potential applications? I mean, I know this is what we're using it for, but I, I guess the one thing I would say, rather than answering that, cause I know the answer is yes. Is it, it might be something that we look at for other applications when we wanna just simply record attendance or other aspects of that, so.
Yes.
Something to think about. Okay, alright, I wasn't the only one. Just about at the end here. Um, any future committee items? One thing I will mention that we will be bringing back the sponsorship document for further discussion. Based on the attendance for this meeting, we pulled it off the agenda. Cause Commissioner Hoof had told me before we had the agenda, he wouldn't be here. And then subsequently, Commissioner Sodeman's daughter, I think it's her last tennis match and parent night. So he is not here for that, so that will be coming back hopefully next month. Any other items you would like to see us work on, Jim? There is a couple board requests that President Mary has. That he hasn't given to me and another one that I have to get further clarification on, um, cause I'm just not. Sure exactly what to do with it, I don't, so I gotta just simply understand what, what their real desire. And what should we be looking for before I know where to go with that one? Anything from?
Um, just to note, next month, October, the meeting will be in between the time we present the budget book. And the time the budget gets approved, so there may be, may be quite a few things to discuss. Related to our sixteen seventeen budget.
True, but I mean, the, the big budget becomes, we can discuss it in committee. But yet, it is big enough for the whole board to discuss that one, so I, we'll see what it. There may be questions that come up that we can address ahead of our final meeting.
Right.
To provide clarification, but I would probably not wanna get fully into a conversation and then do it again the next week.
Let me see, and it would be after the time we receive our certified numbers, so. We will be able to know at least by that day, do we have a plus or minus from what we had anticipated too.
Sure.
Just, it'll be an interesting point in time.
Cause that'll be our first real shot. Okay. Um, so our next meeting would be the third Tuesday in October.
Which would be the eighteenth.
Which would be the eighteenth. Three, correct. We have reached the end of our given agenda, we are adjourned. Wow, it still took forty four minutes.